Welcome to tonight's meeting. Vice Chair Davis would like to participate via telephone tonight. And as a reminder, our bylaws require a vote from the members present, members for her to do so. I would like to entertain a motion that Vice Chair Davis participate via phone.
So moved.
Second?
And support, thank you. Is there any discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer De Vardy?
Yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
The motion carries. Vice Chair Davis, would you indicate where you are attending from and also identify yourself each time you speak, please? Vice Chair Davis?
This is Angela Davis. I'm calling from Ann Arbor, Washtenaw County.
Thank you, Vice Chair Davis. Vanessa, please call the roll for attendance.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Davis, yes.
Treasurer De Vardy?
De Vardy, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
Approval of the minutes, Tab A in our booklets tonight, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the July 27 closed session, September 28 monthly meeting, and October 5 retreat, all of which are submitted. Do I hear a motion, please?
So moved.
Support.
And we have support. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Vanessa, please call the roll.
Discussion.
Trustee Hatcher, sorry.
Mariam's name is spelled M-A-R-Y-A-M.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or corrections to the minutes? If not, Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Davis, yes.
Treasurer De Vardy?
De Vardy, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. The minutes collectively stand approved.
Chair Milliken?
Citizen participation, verbal communications, WCC Education Association, Ms. Kissel.
Good evening. It is October 2021. Now that we've gotten used to meeting in Towesley, we are set for another change as the board moves its meetings to Eastern Michigan's campus starting next month. I'm sure the space will allow us to continue to meet safely during the ML renovations. Like most months, I'm amazed at the work we continue to do and the number of decisions we have to make. Since last month, the WCC EA has been working with the administration to better define the plans for a fuller return to campus in winter 2022. At this time, we have agreed to four letters of agreement on issues ranging from office hours, standing meetings, and reporting days for faculty. We are close to an agreement regarding advisors, counselors, and librarians. Once these agreements are fully reached, we will have a baseline for campus activity that can be considered when evaluating the health and safety for those on campus and the technological support needed. When we transitioned off-campus in March 2020, it took some time to figure out what we needed or what we didn't know about making that change. Returning to a more normal campus routine will tax our systems in ways that we have not anticipated. Consequently, we will continue to work on keeping open lines of communication so we can avoid the pain points as much as possible. And we are fortunate to continue having these conversations. In the last few weeks, I was reminded by the MEA to issue a demand to bargain if we were not in talks about the many COVID-related contractual issues. As President Blanca and I discussed last week, we are forever changed by this pandemic, and some of these changes will be reflected in our contract negotiations that the WCC EA is already planning for in 2022. This is an important time for the WCCA membership, and we've already begun to collect the membership's concerns and ideas related to this participation. Last week, there was also a celebration for three of our members set to retire. In this month's personnel report, you will see that Sue Travis, one of our divisional counselors, has retired after 21 years. We will say goodbye officially to Pat Hill and Mary Burns Coral at the end of the term, and there is such sadness in seeing them all go. We wish them the very best and thank them for their tireless support of the college. We also know that the changes to our faculty and staff will continue at a pace we've never seen before. As I've said to this group many times since March 2020, there is a cost to so many of these changes happening in such a short amount of time. We are forever chasing our tails, it seems, so it is so important that we find those quiet times to connect with friends and family and know that while we may not have all of the answers at any given moment, we remain dedicated to each other and our community in meaningful ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa, are there any public communications?
No.
Are there any written communications?
None received.
I'd like to approve the agenda for the meeting tonight. Do I hear a motion for its approval?
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
And we have support. Any discussion on the agenda? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Jack Davis, yes.
Treasurer De Vardy?
De Vardy, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Our agenda stands approved. We move now to special reports of historically black colleges and university pathways. Executive Vice President Hearns, could you enlighten us on this topic, please?
Well, Dean Reed's going to be joining me, and I'm going to just kind of start us off a little bit here. Earlier this year, we presented, or Dean Reed presented, a report to the board, and it included an HBCU pathway as one of the action items of our diversity plan. In this past month, we have launched this program with the University Transfer Center and the Office of Diversity. And before Dr. Reed comes and tells more about the program and highlights some of the great things that happened in the last couple of weeks as we launched the program, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things about why we did this and why we thought this was important as part of our greater student success strategies. When we think about community colleges, and historically black colleges and universities, we actually share an equity mission together. We also share a mission of access, so expanding access for a vast majority of individuals who have been denied access or not included in higher education. We also share similar populations in that 44% of community college students are low-income and black, and three out of five HBCU students are low-income and first generation. And as we hear more and more every day about student loan debt, we can note that black graduates possess 25,000 more debt than their peers, while HBCU tuition is 30% less than many comparable institutions. And for these reasons, and not alone, we thought this was an important initiative and alliance in many of the things that we were doing here at Washtenaw Community College. Dr. Reed and I had the pleasure of meeting Jackson State University's president over the summer, and he was very well-prepared for our meeting, and one of the things that I loved is that he had a lot of information about Washtenaw Community College. And what he talked a lot about was us being a STEM destination and the great work that we had been doing in STEM. And so when we think about HBCUs, some other things to note would be that although they make up 3% of the institutions across this country, they produce 20% of all African-American graduates and 25% of African-American STEM graduates. They also, first-generation college students from HBCUs match income levels of non-first-generation students within 10 years of graduation, and then black graduates of HBCUs are significantly more likely to have felt supported while in college and to be thriving in their lives afterwards. So for all these reasons, we thought this was extremely aligned to the work that we're doing here at Washtenaw Community College. And as we look at the articulation agreements that we have, it made sense to add these additional articulation agreements and to grow these pathways. And I'm going to share, Dr. Reed's going to come up, I'm going to share a video clip from the last two weeks. And an important thing to note, and which we're really proud of, is that we are currently the only community college in Michigan with undergraduate articulations with HBCUs.
Washtenaw Community College is launching a new program to make it easier for students with associate's degrees to continue their education at one of three historically black colleges and universities. WCC is teaming up with Jackson State University, Mississippi Valley State University, and Southern University in New Orleans to help make this possible. Now eligible students will have guaranteed admission and access to in-state tuition at one of these three HBCUs. Scholarships and application fee waivers will also be available to transfer students.
So as Dr. Hearns mentioned, this video on Channel 7 News was released last week, and last week was our official launch of the HBCU pathway. And we intentionally placed this launch during National Transfer Week, which is also initiative here at WCC. During Transfer Week, every day, we have different institutions from around the state do virtual workshops for our students on campus. And last week, we had 300 participants over the course of those three or four days attend the virtual session. So these are prospective students, current students, and also high school and community men, high school staff and community members. So this is becoming a recruiting strategy for us. It's a retention strategy when we talk about transfer. So we're really looking forward to keep on doing those things. But that HBCU pathway, virtual open house, we had all three of our partners come, and they did a virtual presentation, which we'll have on our website, on the diversity website, coming up soon. So in addition to that video that you just seen, our marketing department, and thank you, Fran, I want to give a special thank you to Fran and the marketing department for, you know, distributing our press release all across the nation. You see Chicago Defender, Atlanta, you know, Jackson State. So each HBCU distributed on their campus and in their local media news stations. So what is the pathway? So there are three main pillars that we focus on with the pathway, and the first thing is about awareness. You know, many people do know about HBCUs, but unfortunately, our youth, sometimes our youth at the high school level, they might not have family members or legacy family members that have attended HBCUs. So, you know, that awareness might not be there. So we are partnering directly with our local school districts. A couple of weeks ago, we had a good meeting with Ypsilanti Community Schools to talk about partnerships and to build on top of that, and we plan to keep doing that with the other school districts. So with those partnerships, during the course of this year, we want to remain safe, but in the future, we do want to actually do visits and tours at those HBCUs. But during this time, we're going to have virtual events, virtual presentations. If you don't know, we have a few current and former staff that have attended HBCUs, so we want to invite those local alumni to host those workshops for our students to talk about their careers and what the HBCU has done for them. So also this opportunity, that's the second piece. Now, Dr. Hearns mentioned we are the first in Michigan, yes, we are the first in Michigan to have more than what is called an articulation agreement. This is a warm handoff. We're talking about a clear, defined pathway to the HBCU. There's clarity in the steps that a student has to take. If a student comes here and completes their associate's degree, each HBCU has different programs that we have partnerships with. If they complete it, then they get guaranteed admission into the HBCU. Also, they have in-state tuition benefits, too. So depending on the HBCU, that could save up to $8,000 a year. Lastly, we talk about support. This is a warm handoff. We know that we have the STEM Scholars Program, the Alpha Scholars Program, and supportive academic advisors and coaches. Our Office of Diversity will welcome the students if they're interested in the program and then connect them with those services. But also, we're going to connect them with the services at the HBCU partners, too. We're already in conversations to learn more about the support services. So that was a key factor into creating the partnerships with the partners that we have so far. So during the course of the last several months, I had the good opportunity to meet several alumni of both WCC and HBCUs. Devon Swanson is one of them. He is a local pastor and attorney in Detroit. He attended here at WCC, and he was the president of Black Student Union. He was, he worked in a few different departments as a student worker, and it really talked about the rigor of the courses that prepared him to go to Morehouse and graduate, and then he got his law degree. So Devon Swanson is just one example of what we'll do in the future. And more information can be found on our website, and actually, we have an interest form for individuals that are interested in participating. These are our partners for right now, Jackson State University, Jackson, Mississippi, Mississippi Valley State University, about two hours away from Jackson, Southern University, New Orleans, and Lane College, about two hours away from Memphis, Tennessee. And last week, about three other universities, after our launch, contacted me to start a partnership as well. So we're still adding more as we go along. So I just want to say thank you to everybody at University Transfer Center. They had a big part in creating the MOUs and articulation agreements and National Transfer Week, marketing me to relations, spreading the word, outreach team, our student recruitment team, they're going out to the high schools right now. Thank you, President Blanca. Thank you, VP Hearns. And our office will continue to work with students as, for the rest of this semester, do information sessions, but then next semester, we're going to onboard students into the actual programs that they want to go into. Thank you.
Thank you for that good information. Are there any trustee questions of Dave Reed while we have him in front of us, or EVP Hearns? Diana?
Yes. I'd just like to say thank you so much for offering this wonderful opportunity for students of color. And you'll be surprised at these predominantly colleges and universities that are being, coming to be a partner with us, have a lot of other, other than minority students there. And I think it's a really eye-opening in today's atmosphere and what's going on with diversity, equity, and inclusion, that we are stepping out onto a platform that hopefully other community colleges in the state of Michigan and other states, I don't know about other states, but especially here in the state of Michigan, and I'm hoping that this is a platform that's a springboard for them to look at and possibly adopt some of the policies in starting this type of a program. I'm really excited about this, and I think this will be a great opportunity for our community and communities that is surrounding Ann Arbor-Ypsilanti area. Thank you so much to both of you for launching this and getting it going, because this is going to be a task. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Trustee De Vardy?
I'm assuming that this opportunity will be available to all our students, no matter what their racial background is. And what's really exciting to me is the possibility that we encourage students of white students, students not of other races, to potentially take advantage of this opportunity as well. And I'm wondering if there's been any discussion about presentations within, at WCC, and outreach to the entire student body? Because this is an opportunity, most of our articulation agreements are with colleges and universities here in Michigan, but a lot of these young people want to go somewhere else. You know, my daughter didn't want to go to a school in Michigan, and I'm sure there are plenty of other students, both students of color and white students, who want to go somewhere else. And this is an opportunity for that. So I'd be interested in hearing what you're doing to promote within our student body across all races, for people to take advantage of the opportunity.
Thank you. So yes, your assumption is correct. Any student, no matter what the race, can go to HBCU. We know that HBCUs were started based off of the segregation back in the day. But now, today, HBCUs are some of the most diverse campuses, and they offer that sense of belonging. Also, HBCUs, no matter what the race, when it comes to STEM, they are some of the best schools to go to when you look at the research. So right now, to answer your second question, we've done a launch and learn with our staff so far, and throughout the course of the semester, we'll have more of those information sessions like we did last week to the rest of our campus. So we'll be still doing info sessions, also planning to partner with some instructors to talk to their classrooms on campus, but it is open to any student of any race.
Anything further?
Thank you.
Trustee Hatcher?
I think my term as trustee goes on for long enough that I look forward to hearing from students who are attending the HBCUs from Washtenaw County and describing their experiences. I'd love to hear from them. It's a wonderful idea. Thank you.
Yes. President Blanca?
Yes. I'd like to commend you, Dr. Reed and Dr. Hearns, for not only having the innovative idea to do something this good, but to actually do it and execute it. So thank you so very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you both for your presentations. Reports are the next item on our agenda. Monthly reports, Tab B in our packet, personnel recommendations. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as submitted before you. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Please support.
And I have a motion and I have support. Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
No, you go ahead. All right.
I just want to say congratulations to Susan Travis on her 21 years of service here at this institution. And there's a few others who are ending their employment, 13 years and so on. I wish that they are able to feel that they contributed to this college of their skills and their knowledge, and especially for their students.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Susan Travis and thank her for her service as well. I hope that her position with the Health Sciences will be filled by another counselor and not necessarily just a, what's the other one?
Advisor.
That's it, advisor. Because we need as many counselors as we can get, and 21 years is a long time, so there are some changes, but thank you for the report. Authorized strength? Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken, Angela, trustee Davis' call dropped, so I'll have to call her again.
I guess I could ask another question about personnel. I know that Mika McCaskill, there was a whole shift personnel and a staff assigned to her. Is that going to stay the same? Is there, are we looking for more shifts in that? Or not yet?
That's under, we're just taking a look at it.
Okay.
Are we connected, Vanessa?
Yes.
Would you please call the roll?
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Davis, yes.
Treasurer De Vardy?
De Vardy, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
The personnel recommendations are approved. Thank you. Next, we have financial reports. And before we vote on the financial reports, Vice President Barnes, is there anything that you would like to highlight for us this evening? Please step up. Thank you.
[inaudible] Oh, there's nothing loaded? No, not for you, I'm sorry. I can pull up your browser.
C.
Good evening. I'll walk you through the financials for the first quarter ending September 30th for the general fund. Basically, what you're going to see is that both our revenues and our expenditures are trending quite well. First, I'm going to walk you through the revenues. The fall tuition is actually a little bit ahead of budget. We had anticipated an enrollment decrease or a credit hour decrease of about 6%. It's only turned out to be about 3%, and therefore, you see the favorable variance there for fall tuition. The spring tuition, this is simply the portion of the spring/summer term that fell into this fiscal year, but both the enrollment and credit hours were up versus the budget for the spring term, or the spring/summer term. The student fees are also up in line with the fall fees and the spring fees accordingly. In total, there, you see tuition and fees are up almost $400,000. Moving on to the taxes, local property taxes, we are right where we should be at this point in the year. We've collected about 60% of our property taxes, so we're right on schedule. In terms of the state appropriations in the next line, you probably saw in the press that the state approved a one-time budget increase of 4% plus a 1% performance increase. So you see $150,000, $146,000 increase for the three months ending September, but by the end of October, that number should be close to $600,000 for that increase from the state. In terms of trade partnerships, we had anticipated very little activity in terms of trade partnerships, but at this time of year, but we've actually had more than we expected. So you see the revenues up there pretty substantially, $629,000. And later, I'll point out the corresponding expenditures that are also up, but net-net, a good thing for the college. In total, 1.25 million revenues are up so far this year as of September 30th. Moving down to the expenditures, I'll highlight a couple of things. The first, I'll highlight the two negative items you see here. The instructional support line, that negative 342, that contains the expenses related to the trade partnerships above. So there was a favorable revenue, there's unfavorable expenditures associated with it, but again, net-net, a favorable thing for the college. The other line, the 202,000 negative there, this is, I know this has been mentioned several times in the past, we budget for about 25 vacancies a year, and so far this year, we're averaging 38 vacancies. So those differential, that differential is giving us favorable variances across all the line items in the expenditures. Some of this also in the expenditure, some of it is timing. So some of this, we don't tend to spend a lot of our money in the first quarter, for example, we'll spend more in the fourth quarter. So some of this will stick, some of it will not, but so far, trending very, very well. In terms of operating transfers, all the operating transfers have been done exactly in line with budget. And finally, I'll point out the line that says federal grant transfers under other non-operating activity. This is simply a deferred revenue item that was booked this year, but is related to the higher education emergency relief funding that we received at the end of last year. It's just an accounting issue, we had to book a portion of it this year. In total, you can see there, we're about $2.7 million ahead of schedule. Again, some of this is timing, but some of it will stick. We'll have to see at the end of the year. Are there any questions before I move on to?
Sure. Trustee De Vardy?
One quick question. So I'm looking at the operating transfers, and we receive every month a deferred maintenance report. Could you just give us a reminder that technology infrastructure upgrade and the debt retirement, where that money's going and how we're processing that?
Well, the debt retirement, that, the payment will go out in March. This is the interest payment, so this is on schedule so far. There's still $1 million pending for the actual principal payment. For the technology infrastructure, this is on schedule. I don't know if you have any specific questions about the infrastructure investments?
But that's something that we approved a while ago, but to be paid over a number of years, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And how many, what year are we in at this point?
I'll have to get back to you. I don't know the answer to that. The Health and Fitness, in terms of financially, how is it doing?
Yeah, the debt and so forth.
Well, it is getting close to break even, where actually the memberships have increased. They've been increasing steadily, month over month. I would say that I'm anticipating that we'll get to break even. I'm hopeful by year-end that we're back to break even. We're a few hundred members off, but not too far. I think we'll be there by year-end.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
I was going to go real quickly to the other, the capital fund. Sorry. The capital fund, real briefly, this is very similar to the past. There's been very modest changes since the last time you saw this. Basically, the big project here is the MLB renovation. In terms of the deferred maintenance fund, the projects that have already been completed this year, about $900,000 worth in the first three months, we still have about $4 million worth of projects to go. And already, we have another $880,000 lined up for the coming year. And then really quickly, finally, in terms of the portfolio, we still have our $26 million of investments in our long-term portfolio. You'll see that about $4 million of that is awaiting reinvestment. I'm expecting roughly half of that to be executed in the months of October and November, so that should help our returns, which are right now slightly below the prior year, because that money is not invested. Any questions? Then I'm done.
Thank you. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees receive the financial reports for September 2021 as follows. General fund, deferred maintenance fund, capital fund, and combined schedule of investments, all funds. Do I hear a motion, please?
Devarti moves that we accept these reports.
Support.
Their support. Is there any further discussion? Vanessa, please call a roll.
Chair Milliken.
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis.
Davis, yes.
Treasurer Devarti.
Devarti, yes.
Secretary Hatcher.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton.
McKnight-Morton, yes.
We have an additional report, facilities development report. EVP Johnson, please.
Good evening. I just wanted to draw the board's attention to really three projects. The first one, the big one, Morris Lawrence renovation. We are on the eve of the actual construction start, so starting next Monday, the construction crew will start to be on-site and will finish up the move-out of the final folks that are still in the building. So, that is going to start next Monday and be done next June. The next one I wanted to draw the board's attention to was our elevator project. Our elevator project was a significant project for the college, included three elevators this year. Both elevators in the LA building, we have completed the east building, the kind of on the wing side of the building, the newest addition, was finished up. Then we went over to BE, and we have completed that elevator, full renovations, and now we've moved on to the west side of the LA building, and we started that, and that's about a two-month project. And that'll be done. And then the other significant project that is about to start with the board's approval of a contract this evening, this will be the parking lots five, six, and seven, and to replace all the lighting fixtures to energy savings dark sky light fixtures. And we will start that project, and that'll take us a number of weeks to complete that. And that's my report.
There's a reference to transformer replacement in here, and I spread somewhere that that was to help prepare us for EV charging. Can you describe a little further what the scope of our thinking is and how much capability might come along with that?
So, Chair Milliken, each time that we replace the electrical infrastructure in a parking lot, we always make sure that we size that infrastructure so that it can accommodate charging stations. So, this is in Lot 7, that we have to replace the transformer as part of this project, and so we are going to be sizing that transformer for the capacity for about six charging stations, both of regular voltage and high voltage charging stations for that location.
Thank you. Trustee McKnight-Morton.
She had her hand up first. The lighting, I'm assuming it's the lighting that doesn't light up the sky, but just lights down?
It's the dark sky lighting, so it's going to... Yep. So, we actually have dark sky lighting today, but it's gotten better over the years. So, the new generation of LED lighting that we're going to be putting in is going to be very strong in terms of its minimization of light pollution up.
Great, thank you.
Diana.
Thank you. Just a question. The equipments that we're ordering or going to be using for enhancement of various buildings, especially the Morris Lawrence building and a couple of other buildings, are any of this equipment on backwater from the containers, they're still being contained?
Fortunately, we put in our orders for all the equipment, like all the HVAC equipment for this big project here in ML back in early summer, and so we were able to get ahead of that. And we just had, we have our weekly meeting today, in fact, and the equipment is right on schedule for, in fact, maybe even a little bit early.
Congratulations on that.
Yeah, so, but it's not here yet, but it's... Everybody says it's right on track, so we don't have any issues. We have had, for recent projects, especially in places where there are unplanned outages, like you'll notice there's a compressor in the TI building that went down. It's a pretty small project, 20,000 in fact, but it's taken us weeks to get a replacement for that compressor. So, we've had to do some makeshift things to accommodate in the meantime, but we are starting to feel it. So, it's really important, premium on planning for projects, as you've seen in the Morris Lawrence, and so we make sure that we schedule in the proper timing, even to account for delays in shipping.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Devarti.
Bill's question actually raised this for me. I'm on the zoning board in the city of Ann Arbor, and there's... We've seen over the course of the last several months, a number of variance requests for the new requirement that the city has for EV charging stations, and so this is something that I'm watching as it's coming in. And I'm just curious, it's not something I had thought about previously here on campus, and I know we have some EV slots in the parking structure. Do we have EV charging stations existing that are ready for people to plug in, basically, anywhere else on campus? And how many slots do we have?
That's a great question, Trustee Devarti. No, at this time, we don't have any other capacity for charging stations on campus. I believe it was trustee Davis at a prior meeting had asked the question of the college, and we are in the middle of building out a strategy for EV charging stations across campus, and we are going to be working through a longer-term plan, but this time, no other capacity other than the parking structure itself.
Is there... Can you tell us when we would see some sense of a timeline of when we would start installing charging stations in some of the outline parking lots?
I think our hope is to be able to complete the assessment, to review with President Belanca, and to integrate it into the next year fiscal '23 budget cycle.
And do you have a target that we're looking for, for a number of EV stations?
We don't yet, no.
I'll look for that eagerly. Thank you.
Diana.
I have another question for you. We're still on Tab D, Campus Repair Maintenance Project, Line 5, Landscape Improvements Campus Wide. It says replace dead or dying shrubs. Is this throughout... Where are they located that you're going to be... Are you going to replace anything, or are you just removing?
Replace.
We're actually replacing. So, AVP Whiptock, he's really brought a systematic process to maintaining our campus, and so this is an area. So, let's make sure each and every year that in our budgets that we allocate a portion, doesn't have to be a big portion, but every year towards, in this case, replacing landscaping that had died out. And so, we started out in the front of TINBE along the parking lots, that we have replaced dead or dying shrubs, and it's really looking nice. And so, each and every year, a small allocation just to keep that landscaping looking fresh and strong.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, EVP Johnson. This is the point in our agenda that my fellow trustees have the chance to share their thinking with the audience. Are there any comments tonight from any of the trustees?
I don't... Last week, I think it was last week or week before, I was in San Diego for the Association Community College Trustees Conference. First of all, I want to say San Diego was cold. And I had taken shorts and short-sleeved tops and everything, and sandals, so I had to hurry up and make some adjustments. Any case, the conference was dedicated to diversity, inclusion, equity, and inclusion, and there were a lot, a lot of different sessions, all with different community colleges throughout the United States. And everyone had something to do with DEI. So, it was hard to pick from a lot of them, so I picked two. And one, it was... The presenter was Dr. Tammy Summers. And there's some books I can say if you're interested in these books, which are really nice. But what they're trying to do, I'm going to just try to summarize it from what I understood and understand about what's going on here, is that DEI is really the forefront of all community colleges, based on what we've been doing throughout the country and hearing what's being said, and what they're trying to do. They're trying to recognize what, like us tonight, example, past few board meetings, that we have to understand that there's a whole new revolution, I'm going to use that word, in an outcome of what needs to be done so that we can understand each other in a good, hospitable way, excuse me, towards each other, and understand what's going on in the community colleges. Because community colleges, everyone is different. Some areas, some community colleges are in an area that is predominantly white, some areas are predominantly black. So, we have... What they're doing is trying to show that we can all have these community colleges that are by their location area, that we can still work, and if somebody comes into that area, that they're able to adjust to them, and through training, through understanding, through the faculty. And I found that, one, this one I really liked a lot, but another one was with our local community college, Dale Nesbury from Muskegon Community College. They put on a very nice session of talking about how they have totally revamped their whole area of dealing with diversity, equity, and inclusion. And what they've put in, and also who's working with them, is Lucian. And Lucian is setting up, just like they've done here through with Muskegon, is putting in extra televisions in classrooms, putting in, changing their format of how the faculty is to address their classes with diverse students. It's really kind of more convoluted than what I'm trying to explain, but it's something that what we are doing is really the forefront, as mentioned before. I'm hearing that other community colleges are starting to do what we're trying to do right now, and they haven't gotten to us yet. So, if anyone's interested in some of these books, and especially how you talk to persons of diversity, and I'll tell you one name of a book, it's called 35 Dumb Things Well-Intended People Say. And that's very, very important to know, because when a person, a white person particularly, or any other races outside of black, don't understand what it means and how it feels when someone says something to you that you take it, it's offensive, but you try to not let it be offensive. You try to ignore it. You try to just wash it away. So, this book, and there's another one I'll say, it's called... One is Ouch, the other one is Equity Talk, and Equity Walk. So, these three books are very, very important to know about, because it really opens the door of how to talk to people. And it could be to Asians, it could be to Indians, it could be to any other person of color. And it's so important to understand what it means to say, for an example, "I love Indians," or "I like Indians." Well, if you're talking to an Indian, and you say that, I'll give you another example, "I like blacks, my best friend is black," and what does that mean? Those are very offensive words that are being said. So, I think this whole conference was an eye-opener, not just for me, but for everyone that was there that tried to go to these sessions, because these sessions were very important for everybody to hear about. And there's a lot of presidents putting on sessions from all over the country.
What was the book, 35 Dumb Things?
35 Dumb Things Well-Intended People Say.
Thank you.
How many people attended the conference, Diana?
You know, that's a good question, but I would suspect over 2,000.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts.
Thank you.
Any other trustee comments on any matter? President Belanca?
Yes, thank you.
It's your turn, please.
Yes, I do have some things to say. Once again, our radiography students are showing how well they know their field. In a recent 2021 annual meeting of the Michigan Society of Radiology... I hate this word. Radio...
Radiological?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, technologists. Two WCC students won first-place awards in this competition. David Chesser took first prize in the Student Radi...
Radiological?
Yeah, competition. Come on, I can say this word, radiography. Did I say it right? Okay, come on.
Radiological.
No, it's radiography.
Radiography.
Radio, okay, sorry. All right.
Radiography.
Radiography. Thank you. Thank you. All right, even presidents can make mistakes, all right, all right. Which is much like a spelling bee, of all things. And Hailey Kraft was also awarded first place for her students.
Thirty Five Dumb Things Well-Intended People Say.
Thank you.
How many people attended the conference, Diana?
You know, that's a good question. But I, I would suspect over 2,000.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts.
Thank you.
Any other trustee comments on any matter? President Blanca?
Yes, thank you.
It's your turn, please.
Yes, I do have some things to say. Once again, our radiography students are showing how well they know their field. In a recent 2021 annual meeting of the Michigan Society of Radiology, I hate this word, radio.
Radiological?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, technologists. Two W C C students won first place awards in this competition. David Chesser took first prize in the Student Radio.
Radiological?
B, yeah, competition. Come on, I can say this word, radiography. Did I say it right? Okay, come on.
Radiological.
No, it's radiography.
Radiography.
Radio, okay, sorry. All right.
Radiography.
Radiography. Thank you. Thank you. All right, even presidents can make mistakes. All right, all right. Which is much like a spelling bee, of all things. And Hailey Kraft was also awarded first place for her student scientific essay. And of course, we owe all of this to our faculty member, William Nelson, who has, continues to be an excellent leader of the program. Our W C C faculty continue to take part in the art scene in Ypsilanti. Last month, Digital Media Arts Faculty Ingrid Ankersen, remember her? She did the, the printing, right? She exhibited her art show at Pearl Street Studios in downtown Ypsilanti. And at the end of September, W C C music instructor Steve Summers performed with his jazz group, Steve Summers and Friends Outdoors on the Ypsilanti Food Co-op Patio. Faculty publications, again, and I believe I thanked him at the last meeting, it's Tom Zimmerman, our English faculty and director of our writing center, had poems published recently in Sledgehammer and Zero Readers, online literary journals. And part-time English instructor Amy Higgins recently published an essay entitled Sabotage or Saving Grace? Psychiatric Diagnosis Can Be Both. Transfer Week, last week was National Transfer Week, as we just heard. And I'd really like to thank especially the liberal arts faculty and staff for all the work that they did and the advisors in Transfer Week with the transfer information centers and everything that has gone on. So thank you so very much for all of that. And this is National Arts and Humanities Month. And so it's Liberal Arts Week at W C C. Again, thank you so much for that. And Veterans Day is Thursday, November 11. And we will be holding this event at campus once more. It will include a flag raising hosted by our veteran, student veterans at 7:00 A.M. And thank you.
Thank you. We move now into old business with the receipt of the fiscal year 21 audit. And before we move into that, VP Barnes, do you have some, an overview you can give us, please?
Just very briefly, I just want to remind you that if this was a clean audit, there were no changes versus what you saw last month. It's exactly the same. And the only other comment I wanted to make was the single audit, which is usually presented at the same time as the fiscal year audit. As you remember, the partner told us that it's been delayed. They were awaiting some guidance. They've since received that guidance. So they're going to be finishing that single audit in November, and that should be ready for presentation in December. That would be the single audit. Thank you.
Any questions, VP Barnes? Seeing none, thank you. The, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees receive the F Y 21 audit as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
DeVarty moves, we accept and receive this fiscal year 1921, or 2021 audit as submitted.
Thank you. Do I hear support?
Support.
Support from trustee Hatcher? Any further discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Davis, yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
McKnight-Morton, yes.
And the motion passes. Thank you. The next matter of old business is parking lot lighting. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a construction contract with Harlan Electric and the amount not to exceed $233,203. And AVP Johnson, is there anything further that you care to add to this discussion?
Nothing further, thank you.
Are there any questions, AVP Johnson? Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Thank you. I read this and I was just kind of, something struck me real, I don't know, out of nowhere. I don't know why this time. I've seen this, these types of reports before, so this isn't like my first one. But this time, my question is, what constitutes the lowest bid for most or all of the contracts? Now, I did read, you know, I read the, what you have, you know, or what do you call these, the bids? But it's still, some of the bids that I've read doesn't add up to me. And that's, I just need to understand. Because sometimes you can have the lowest bid and it's not the best bid just because it was the lowest one. So what makes it you go ahead versus the one that's a little bit higher than this one?
Thank you, trustee McKnight-Morton. That's a great question. The college goes to great length to put together a very detailed and robust bid package for each of our contracts that we sent out for bid. Many times vendors will submit bids that are not responsive. So what we say is lowest responsive bidder, meaning that they are responding to all of the requirements to which we're asking a vendor to bid upon. And so many times they will bid on some, but not all. Or as many times they will specify their own materials that they want to use. We'll say to use a certain grade of steel, they, they will come back with a bid that might be lower, but it might be a different grade of steel. And so the college vets these bids very thoroughly. And so sometimes you are right that the bid, some bids will be lower, but they're not the lowest responsive bidder to all of the college's criteria for that particular bid.
Okay, then, I don't want to jump the gun here, but I saw, I'll wait, because I do have a question for another one. You're pretty much in this line. I mean, I, I, I.
We'll come back to you.
Yeah, you come back to it, yeah. I'm not sure that this is.
Again, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a construction contract with Harlan Electric and the amount not to exceed $233,203. Do I hear a motion?
Shall move.
Report.
And we have motion and support. Is there any further discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis? Vice Chair Davis?
No.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
McKnight-Morton, yes.
I'm sorry, I had my mute on. Davis, yes, my mute was on.
Thank you.
The motion still passes. Thank you. The next matter of old business before us is approval of the 2023-2027 capital outlay plan. And before we move into that, President Blanca, is there anything that you would like, or your team would like to share in this matter?
Yes, there is. Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Executive Vice President Johnson. But you may recall that the year before last, we submitted a capital outlay request for the Student Center building. And based on the conversation we had as a group at our last meeting, we decided it would be best to pull the recommendation that we had for a smart cities building at this time. However, we really do need that smart, that, I'm sorry, it was called the Student Success Center, which is our student success building that we have right now. And we felt that this would be the appropriate time for us, again, to resubmit the proposal that you had originally approved a year ago, if you would consider just allowing us to present it again for their review. Nothing has changed in regards to the design of the facility or anything of that nature. And we'd like to submit that again for their review. So Bill, did you want to add more to that?
Just a little bit, President Blanca. Just prior to I get to the capital outlay request, the Board has received the bound version. And from the last meeting to now, all we've done is updated for latest data regarding fall '21 enrollment. So that's, that's the, the change in the bound version. And then to President Blanca's point, we've also provided for the Board what would be two amendments to that bound version. In section F, under the implementation plan, item A, there is a question that says, does the college have a priority project that it would like to present for capital outlay requests? And our answer is yes. Our, our recommendation is that we present the Center for Success, which is the same project that we presented two years ago. I might remind the Board, last year, the state did not entertain any requests for capital outlay because of COVID conditions and questions around funding. That's now changed. The, the state is now asking for capital outlay requests. And the Center for Success Building includes a number of elements. It includes the deferred maintenance element, so the replacement of the HVAC system, which we're estimating between nine and 10, 10 million. It is the addition, a very small addition, to creating a new front door to the Student Center building, which would allow for better access into the building. It, it would create a place of, a sense of, place of, of front door for the college. The Board might, might recall the, the nice glass renderings that we had, that really would create a place of, of sense of, of being within the Student Center itself. It also includes an upgrade to technology, much like we did for the Morris Lawrence Building. It also would provide for strong technology resources for staff and, and students alike. And then the main theme, the main theme is to aggregate within the Student Center building, that we would rename as the Center for Success, all the other components that lead to students achieving their goals when they come to college. First, to get alignment around the career that they would like. Two, to get them in the right academic programs, both credit and non-credit side, that allows them to achieve their goal. Thirdly, to wrap around services, around advising and counseling, learning labs for the students, so they would be able to get over any hurdles that they might have. And then lastly, to align it with the employers in the community. So to bring the Career Center, to bring the apprenticeship program, and to bring the University Transfer Center. We have, and you've heard from prior presentations, a, a transfer center that is, that is more virtual than it is a place. And so we would like to have a transfer center concept as well. There is, there's a lot of lessons that we've learned during COVID that we think need to be strengthened and, and further supported of students. And so we think the Center for Success can accomplish all those things, deferred maintenance, a new center of service area, and a lot of things that deal with student success, including getting jobs. And so we estimate that, that cost is about 23 million, which is the same cost that we had presented a couple of years ago.
And we do realize it will probably, I'm sorry, sir.
We're calling on you, please.
You are? Okay. We do realize that, you know, that cost will probably go up. But to be completely open, I mean, this is something we talked about today. Because we looked at the opportunities that were available to us. And we feel that this is something that we should proceed with. And we didn't want to just give you an arbitrary number, like, you know, this is what we gave you before. But you, we do know that we may, it may cost more, but we'll see when that hap, if, if we're fortunate enough to get it. We will see what happens then. But this is due to the state today, tomorrow?
Friday.
No, Monday.
Friday it is.
Friday.
Friday, yeah.
Because it's part of this package.
Larry, does the five-year capital outlay plan that's before us now include the points that AVP Johnson just referenced, or does it need to be amended to reflect those?
The, the bound version that the Board has, along with the, the amendments, so the motion that, that the Board has before them would, would accomplish the goal that's required for us to, to submit a capital outlay request.
Thank you.
If, if you approve the five-year plan.
Thank you. Okay. Trustee DeVarty, do you have a comment?
Well, first off, so you're saying that this Center for Success is in this five-year out?
It's, it was, it was given tonight to, to.
Sorry, I'm just looking at it. I, I like the idea that it's a large project that improves our facilities. Half of it, 11.5 million of that 23 million is what we're asking the state for. So the net for us, according to this, would be 11.5 million, which isn't that much more than just dealing with deferred maintenance. So we're getting all the other stuff as being bought by the state. However, there's no way I believe these numbers for two reasons. When we added state-of-the-art, up-to-date technology to the Morris Lawrence project, the bill for that was what, $3 million of additional cost? Well, that wasn't in the original thing that we looked at a couple of years ago. So I see that as an additional cost that we're gonna, going to see already, if we're serious about having up-to-date technology that will take us into the next two decades, which is what I would want us to have in anything that we build of this scale. Secondly, the costs of building materials have escalated substantially. And we're seeing that in one of the other items on our agenda. And I support that item. And I support adding, taking on the additional commitment and paying that extra cost. And I'll elaborate the reasons why when we come to that. But that's going to happen on this, too. So there's no way this is going to be a $23 million project. It's, I wouldn't be surprised if it's a $28 or $30 million project by the time we get to it. And I'm really, I'm torn. I'd like us to submit this to the state. I recognize there's a deadline for us to be able to do that. But by the same token, having just seen this as a request to go forward to the state without any warning, I'm reluctant to, to submit something I know is probably at least 20 to 25 percent, going to be at least 20 to 25 percent more expensive than what we're saying it is. I just want to put that on the table. I'm not sure how I'll vote on this at this moment. And I haven't had a lot of time to think about it or digest it. And I want to hear from some of the other Board members.
President Blanca, do you have a response?
We, are you honest?
I, I can give some context for the 23 million. Here, here is what we do know, trustee DeVarty, in terms of current costs. We know that we just bid the HVAC system out, and that was nine, $9 million. We know the technology, we have a good reference point here of $3 million. I would say we're not doing nearly the same kinds of things in that building that we're doing here. But that, that was a $3 million allotment. So let's just say that, that that's about the same. So now we're up to 12 million. We, we know that the front door, the glass front door, is going to cost about $3 million in, in current costs, base pump bids that we've just done. So that adds up to about 15 million dollars to take care of the deferred maintenance, the new front door, and the technology. That leaves us about $8 million then to allocate to accomplish, it, it really is more about finishes within the buildings, to be able to build out spaces with those finishes that are suitable for those spaces. It's like rearranging the deck chairs. It's not moving, it's not blowing out tons of walls. So is 8 million, that's a great question, is 8 million dollars at the end of the day going to be enough money to accomplish the rest of the, the programmatic goals? And, and we just don't have enough time to answer that question fully.
The other discussion? The other discussion? The recommendation, President Blanca, do you?
If we were to get this, any way you look at it, your point, by the way, is very well If we were, any way you look at it, we would still need to do what VP Johnson just mentioned. If the state partnered with us and allowed us to, and partnered with us by granting us this opportunity, we could take care of what we need to take care of, and then use that $8 million to provide those services. And we may, and you're probably right, have to add a little more if we choose to, if we choose to at that time, to, you know, add more, to add more technology or whatever. We may need to at the time. But any way you look at it, we're still going to need to spend $15 million. We just haven't gotten there yet because of the HVAC system that needs to be replaced in the student center and the front door and the HVAC system for there. And we won't, and when we spend that $15 million, we won't be addressing the needs that our students need to get jobs. We won't be addressing any of the programmatic needs that our student needs. So, but your point is well, very well taken.
I'm willing to give a great leap of faith in the administration here. We need to pass this in order to put this on the docket, to get in line for the $11 million from the state. So I'm willing to vote for it, for that reason. And I know we need to spend the $9 million, no matter what, on the HVAC. So now is the time, maybe, to make the bigger project. I'm just, I wish we would have seen this. You know, I wasn't here last month, but I wish we would have seen it, had a little bit of a warning that this would be on our table tonight. But I'm going to give a leap of faith and trust in the administration of the college, and I will support this. But I want noted that, you know, depending on the state, I'm not going to want a $23 million project if the state doesn't ante up substantially for it.
Thank you.
So what's the timeline? Okay, you have to have this proposal in by Friday, correct? But after that, we don't know how long it'll take from the state.
It's just a concept, right? Like, we've done everything else.
It's just a concept.
Right. And if they allow us to do it, then you know we have, it's, we have to come up with the drawing, and then we bring that back to the state. It's a concept.
The concept.
So really, all you're voting on tonight is the concept. You're not voting on the program or the project.
Right.
It's just, you like the concept, you agree with the concept, support the concept, but you've never voted on the, you're not voting on the building or on doing this project. It's the concept.
I have one further question.
Please, go ahead.
We did submit this previously to the state, and they were not awarding at all. Did we, at that time, get feedback from them that would say, we like the proposal, send it back when we're able to handle it? Was there, did we get any sort of positive feedback from the state when we submitted this previously?
The last time that we submitted this project, the state, it was just prior to COVID, and the state did not go through a scoring process as a result. There's a scoring rubric for each project. So we don't know, in the current form of this submittal, how the state is going to score our project.
Okay. Well, with my, I will support this.
Trustee Hatcher.
Yeah, I'm a bit upset that we're seeing this for the first time tonight, and we have to hurry up for two days, when we spent a lot of time at the previous meetings talking about capital requests. And even Friday, we got this capital outlay plan delivered, didn't include it. I'm not sure it's a leap of faith, but I'd be, as a concept, I would support it. But I would also like to see, perhaps in our next meeting, when, and I'm sure it will happen, say the state gives us 11 million, and so we're responsible for 12. But then there'll be a request for another five, for something else that's gone up in price, or something we forgot to add in the first place. And I would like to stick to our 12. And I'd like to see a prioritization of what that 12 is for. In other words, what's the most important thing? What's the second? And what can we do without, so that we don't go over the 12? Because I know we will want to.
You mean, next month, you want to see that?
Well, soon, before, you know, before we authorize the money, before we hear from them, I'd like to know what the priority is for that $12 million, what the priorities are.
So President Blanca, maybe I could just walk through with the board with the process? So the board will have, essentially, from today, about two years to, to deliberate on the merits of the project, given the current construction prices and the other needs of the college. Because, so we put it in the hopper today, it'll get scored sometime late this year or early next year. Then the state will come out with their rankings, and they'll say, here, we are going to potentially fund these projects. Then it goes through the state budget process.
Yeah, I remember.
Right? And then, after that happens, then we are granted a preliminary planning authorization. And then we'll go through that detailed process, and then we'll come up with the final cost estimate for it. Then it goes back to the state for the budget process of, that would be calendar '23, fiscal '24. So the board will have, and the college needs to fully develop the program elements and the costs, including prioritization. Trustee Hatcher, I think that's a great question, and that's always part of our process, is around prioritization.
If we're not, you know, if we won't be actually spending money for two years, it's guaranteed that that 12 million will change, number one. And when it changes, and when it comes to the board for 24 million, or somewhere along the way, I would like to see the prioritization so that we know what we cannot do. We are blessed with a, thanks to a lot of hard work and wonderful properties in Washtenaw County, we're blessed with an incredible amount of capital, of money, frankly. And we're very fortunate to have that. But it's also a responsibility not to squander it. And so when you tell me it's going to be 12, I know it's going to be 24. And I want to know what the priorities are that we will have to cut, rather than just spend, because the state has given us money. It's hard to turn down state money. I understand that.
Okay. All right. Here's the deal. Today, this morning, we found out from our lobbyists, this morning, that there was money available. We had no intention of bringing this to you at all. However, when we found out this morning that there was money available, and that our, that the proposal we put before them two years ago might have a shot, so everything you've said is right, which, you know, if we knew about this, we should have told you. We didn't. We found out this morning from our lobbyists that this money was available. So we did the best, what we thought was the right thing. We brought to you the opportunity of putting something back before them, so that if this, since this money is available, we may, they will look at this, and they will evaluate it according to their specifications. But you're quite, every single thing that everyone has said is so correct, I was just trying not to say that. If you understand what I mean. We just found out in a good, the best response we could give you as your executive team and as your president is to say, here's an opportunity, we don't think we should leave it on the table just in case. But we can walk away, though. You know, eventually, whenever you want to. That's exactly what happened. So I can understand why you feel the way you do, and, because you're right. But we just found this out today.
I wasn't suggesting that we walk away.
Oh, I know you weren't.
I was suggesting that when time comes, and it will come, that that 12 million becomes 20 million, I want to know what we cut and what we can afford. That's all I'm asking.
Oh, you're right. And we'll do that. Because you're right, you're right.
We haven't done it in the past.
Will you know what?
We never talk about, this is, this, it's increased this amount of money, and we can afford it. We just add on 3 million all the time, not a problem. I want to know what we might cut when that time comes. That's all I'm saying. I'm here for another four years, I can wait for that.
If we get it, I hope we do, but yeah.
Trustee DeVarty.
I want to say, I think this is an opportunity, and it's a tremendous, it's a tremendous opportunity to take advantage of funding available from the state. And it's a building that does need work. We're already looking at a substantial deferred maintenance investment here, and we can leverage that to do more. So I'm all for that. I'm really encouraged, as you lay out a timeline that gives us a process with numerous opportunities to tweak, to change, or to turn away. So I feel good, actually, after you gave us that timeline. I feel good about voting yes to take advantage of this opportunity. This is a proposal that we voted to submit before.
Yes.
You know, two years ago.
Yes.
So let's do it again. We looked at it a couple of years ago. It's been quite a while since we looked closely at it, but we gave it our thumbs up then. I'm willing to give our thumbs up again and recognize that it's going to need some tweaking. And I insist that we do technology that's going to take us at least two decades into the future as part of whatever project we do. So I'll be actually more enthusiastic with those considerations in voting in favor of this.
Trustee Hatcher.
I'm going to vote in favor of it, albeit bit reluctantly. But I'd also like to add that when we talk about student success and jobs and career opportunities, they're not just, it's not just promoted and based and supported by walls and windows and pretty buildings. It's also supported by counselors and advisors and people talking to other people. And I'd like, I hope we can see the investment in that part of student success, as well as a building for student success.
Point well taken.
Ladies and gentlemen, tab G in our agenda, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the five-year capital outlay plan for fiscal years 2023 to 2027 as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
And is there support?
DeVarty, support.
Motion and support. Is there any further discussion? Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Davis, yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
McKnight-Morton, yes.
Recommendation passes. Thank you. Morris Lawrence Building renovation capital project, tab H in the packet tonight. The recommendation reads as follows: To meet the significant technology demands of the Morris Lawrence Conference Center, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees approve an increase to the MLB renovation capital project budget from $10 million to $13 million 500,000, and that the incremental funding for this project be provided by a transfer of general fund reserves to the capital fund in the amount of $3 million 500,000. Further, that the Board of Trustees approve an increase in contract with STNCO from $9 million to an amount not to exceed $10 million to perform the renovation and construction services for the Morris Lawrence Building renovation project, including the related building infrastructure work required to support the technology improvements. Do I hear a motion?
DeVarty moves.
Is there support?
Davis, yes.
And there's support from Davis? Thank you. Is there any discussion on this recommendation? DeVarty, please.
I feel guilty taking up more time. I'm enthusiastic about spending the money for the technology. I view the Morris Lawrence Building as our interface, one of our strongest interfaces with the broader Washtenaw County community and the taxpayers that so generously support our institution. I think it's vital that as we do this major renovation, that it include up to the moment state-of-the-art technology that will carry this facility into the next two decades, and I'm enthusiastically in support of this.
So many of our nonprofits in the community that rely on the Morris Lawrence Building are reeling with the fact that they've got to go somewhere else until late next summer. And it's really been case in point how valuable an asset it is that we have, and the necessity of our taking the time to improve it and make it market-ready. Trustee Hatcher.
I'd just like to suggest that as we're, we're planning buildings in the Great Lake Regional Center and perhaps the Student Center, that we always take into account what we're being asked to add here. We always need to be cutting-edge with the technology in any renovation we do, and that should always be included in the prospectus. It wasn't in this one, that's why we're adding it, but let's, let's try to do that all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee DeVarty?
I just wanted to kind of respond to your comments. And I think, I look, what this will do, this enhancement of the technological capacity of our, of this facility, will be a huge reward for the patience of all the community organizations that through the years have used this building. And their patients will be rewarded by having a facility that they will, they can be proud to bring all of their productions and efforts and activities back to as soon as the project is done.
Any further discussion, comments? Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Davis, yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
McKnight-Morton, yes.
Thank you. The recommendation stands approved. Next, facilities, buildings, improvements, and Great Lakes Regional Training Center Expansion Capital Project. It's tab I on the agenda tonight. And before we vote on this improvements recommendation, EVP Johnson, is there anything that you'd like to open our eyes to?
Yes, please. Thanks. Thanks, Chair, Chair Milliken. When we had put forth the original memo for discussion at the September meeting, and then further discussed at the retreat, that was all based upon cost estimates that were developed back in the March-April time period. The board might, might know that in the last six months, there has been significant and radical changes in construction costs. Metal costs have gone up more than 100%. Mechanical systems, including HVAC systems, have gone up more than 150%, and general labor costs have gone up significantly. As a result, when we had first presented this to the board, in total, we were estimating the project to cost
in total, we were estimating the project to cost for the three pieces, which is the Great Lakes expansion, the renovation of the SRB, the storage-receiving building, and then the improvements to the maintenance garage, to cost all in $4 million. After we got the bid back for the GL expansion, the first leg of that three-phase process, that bid came in significantly higher. We were estimating that cost to be $2.4 million. It actually came in, as the board has seen here, just on under $3.6 million. And the estimate we had back in March was based upon industry trends at that moment. And they have significantly gone up. So we are now forecasting that the total cost of the project is going to increase by $1.8 million, from $4 million to $5.8 million, of which the Great Lakes expansion portion is going to increase by about $1.3 million. The board might recall that as part of the Great Lakes expansion, we asked our trade partner, UA, to fund a significant portion of that expansion. Originally, that was going to be $1.2 million. We have asked them to increase their funding by $900,000, and the UA trade partnership has agreed. So in fact, the president of the Train Training Fund had an emergency board meeting, knowing that we are going to be meeting tonight, to ask for an incremental $900,000 of spending on top of the $1.2. And they unanimously approved that, which is a real strong reflection of the partnership, the strength of the partnership between the UA and the college. So with that said, we are asking the board tonight to approve a total project of $5.8 million. That the UA will fund $2.3 million of that. And the total college contribution, which we're recommending to come from the general fund, would be $3.5 million.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees establish a facilities building improvement and Great Lakes building expansion capital project in the amount of $5.8 million. And that $3.5 million be transferred from the general fund to the capital fund in support of this project. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Is there support?
DeVarty's support.
Is there a discussion? Trustee Hatcher?
Have we taken into account any upgrade of technologies in this plan?
The technology needs that we have would be, when we move facility staff into their space, their new space in the SRB, that's where technology would go. And that's pretty basic staff support technologies. In the Great Lakes building, they are classrooms as the UA have specified them.
So that's included?
Yes.
Thank you.
Trustee DeVarty?
First of all, I want to publicly thank the people at the UA. They've been tremendous partners here with us, with their educational programs. When they come to town, it's a huge benefit to the community as well as being an educational opportunity for people here as well as all over the country. The fact that they're willing to step up their contribution by $900,000 speaks very loudly to their satisfaction with our partnership. And it's a partnership I'd like to continue. I think it's really important. I see this is a small investment in maintaining a relationship that is a boon to the college and a boon to the entire community and a benefit to these workers that come from all over the country for their training here. So I enthusiastically support this.
Is there any other discussion? As written in Tab I, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees establish a building facilities improvement and Great Lakes building expansion capital project in the amount of $5.8 million. And $3.5 million be transferred from the general fund to the capital fund in support of this project. We have a motion. We have support. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Davis, yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
Next, we have an action item, a revision to the 2021 and 2022 schedule of board meetings. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees revise its schedule of monthly board meetings by changing the location of the November through June 2022 meetings from the Morris Lawrence Building here on campus to Eastern Michigan University's Student Union Auditorium Room 208 at 900 Oakwood Street, Ipsle, Michigan, due to the closure, the aforementioned closure of the Morris Lawrence Building due to its renovations. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Is there any discussion on this recommendation?
Is there any parking?
I would just like to know, the people who are in this facility and will have to go somewhere else, do you know where they're going? Has it been arranged yet?
You mean the people who are working here?
Morris Lawrence.
In the Morris Lawrence.
Right. They're already out.
They're out.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for us. It's vacated.
They've even turned off the heat.
We're the last ones, folks, right here.
Yeah.
Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Davis, yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
The recommendation passes and will be moving to Eastern Michigan. Thank you. We move into new business. For discussion, the Great Lakes Regional Training Center Expansion Construction Contract. EVP Johnson, would you like to walk us through this recommendation, please?
Thank you very much. As the board will see, we bid this out and have had five strong bids. It all came within about $200,000 of one, of one another. As one of the requirements of this bid is that the anticipated start date would be November 1 so that we could accomplish completing the building by July so that the UA could get into their space prior to the summer training program for next summer. We are pleased to make a recommendation for STenco Corporation was the lowest responsive bidder for this job. And would be glad to answer any questions that the board may have regarding that bid process.
Any discussion here from any of the trustees? If trustees feel comfortable to vote, I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda and make Tab K an action item.
So moved.
Support.
And there's support. Is there any further discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Davis, yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
Recommendation is supported. Thank you. The amended agenda now, Tab K. The recommendation is that the college approve a construction contract with STenco Construction Company in the amount not to exceed $3,587,000 in support of the related Great Lakes Regional Training Center Expansion Project. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion. We have support. Is there any discussion on this recommendation? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis? Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. The recommendation passes. We move to Tab L, Morris Lawrence Building Technology Contracts. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the following Morris Lawrence Building Technology Contracts, ML Audio-Visual Contract with Thonner Electronic Laboratories, Inc., DBA Tel Systems Services for an amount not to exceed $1,209,938, and a ML Network Contract with CTC Technologies for an amount not to exceed $482,692. Do I hear a motion?
DeVarty moves.
And I think Vice Chair Davis seconded that motion. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Davis, yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Now, I would like to entertain a motion to recess the monthly meeting to enter closed session for the purpose of discussing some pending litigation. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
DeVarty seconds.
I have a motion and I have a second. Is there any discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis? Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
All right. That motion is approved. We appreciate your attending tonight's meeting. Trustees, we will go into ML 120. My fellow trustees, I will entertain a motion to resume the open meeting of the Board of Trustees.
So moved. DeVarty moves.
Hatcher.
Davis, yes.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I move that we amend our agenda to add an action item, settlement of Proberski versus Washtenaw Community College lawsuit.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Support.
Is there any discussion?
Well, first of all, I'd like to read the motion.
I need Vanessa to call the roll on the resumption of public meeting. Vanessa?
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken, sorry. Vice Chair Davis?
Davis, yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
We have resumed our meeting. Thank you. I will entertain now a motion to amend the meeting agenda to add an action recommendation regarding pending litigation. Do I hear a second?
I move.
I need a second to my motion.
All right. I second.
Is there any discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Davis, yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Thank you. We have now amended the agenda. Trustee DeVarty, I'd take a recommendation from you if you're willing.
Sure. Recommendation, the Board of Trustees approves the proposed tentative lawsuit settlement agreement reached between Joel Proberski and the college on the terms presented during the October 26, 2021 closed-session board meeting and authorizes President Blanca to sign the agreement on behalf of the Board of Trustees.
I'll entertain a motion to accept this recommendation.
So moved.
Support.
And I have a motion and support. Is there any discussion on it? Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Davis, yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. The resolution, the recommendation is accepted, passed, approved. At this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the October monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Vanessa, your turn. Please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Davis, yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.